There we go. I have two folks that were unable to join us in person today, so I'll go ahead and introduce those, and then we have the other new hires here to introduce themselves. First off, we have Randy Richmond as a property appraiser trainee in the assessor's office, and Deborah Turek, a peer support specialist in HHS.
Great.
Hi.
Hi.
My name is Sarah. I'm from Support Services for Behavioral Health.
Thank you and welcome. And don't be too eager to get back to the chair. If you wouldn't mind, everybody line up in front of that whiteboard, and we like to get a group photo. Thank you.
Hi, good morning. My name is Jennifer Vlasov. I am a 340B Coordinator Analyst, and I work for HHS Finance.
340B, can you tell us in a nutshell what that's about? I'm sure it's some funding source or program.
So it's very basically a drug pricing program that lets you buy much cheaper drugs to kind of offset other costs.
Oh, great. Great, thank you, welcome.
Hi.
Hi. My name is Maddie, and I do front support for the primary care clinics in Walport, Newport, and Lincoln City.
Wonderful.
Hello, everyone, good morning. My name's Sarah Hakama, and I am the Outreach Engagement and Community Partnership Analyst with Public Health, so HHS, and I'm in the Modernization Team.
Thank you and welcome. That's it, so Mr. Lipp, if you'll grab your trusty camera, which he is, then you'll see yourselves in the next issue of County Connections. Look for that in your email inbox. It's a great way to keep up with what's happening in the organization. Now, at the first meeting of the month, we would also be celebrating service anniversaries, people who have been with us five, 10, 15, 20 years, and so on, but it just turns out this month, we don't have one person reaching one of those five-year milestones. First time I can remember, but... Next up, and could our presenters come forward for our proclamation of Alcohol Awareness Month? And while they're coming forward, I will read the proclamation. Whereas Alcohol Awareness Month is a national observance held every April to increase public awareness and understanding about the dangers associated with alcohol consumption, which remains the most commonly used addictive substance in the United States. Whereas excessive alcohol use is the third-leading cause of preventable death in Oregon, with Lincoln County experiencing the sixth-highest rate of alcohol-related deaths in the state. Whereas addiction is a serious public health issue that should be recognized as a treatable medical condition, one that calls for compassion, evidence-based treatment, and strong community support rather than judgment or stigma. And whereas alcohol education and prevention programming can help communities, families, and friends better understand the risks of alcohol use and support-informed, responsible decision-making. And whereas, local organizations in Lincoln County play a vital role in addressing excessive alcohol use by providing education, support services, outreach, and resources that promote prevention, recovery, and overall community well-being. And whereas, it is essential that we continue to build a culture in which every person, regardless of age, background, or circumstance, has access to the support resources and information they need to make healthy choices and seek help without fear or stigma. Now, therefore, we, the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim April 2025 as Alcohol Awareness Month in Lincoln County, and encourage all to come together to raise awareness, support prevention efforts, and promote a healthier, more connected Lincoln County. Now, do you both have the red light on, on the microphone in front of you? Okay, and if you would introduce yourselves, then the floor is yours.
Well, I'll introduce first, because I think you have more to say. My name is Sarah Heard, thank you. I'm our Health Promotion Program Manager in HHS in the Public Health Division.
Thank you.
My name is Ruby Arismandi, and I'm the ADPEP and the Alcohol and Drug Prevention Coordinator for Lincoln County Public Health. And I have a little bit to say more on Alcohol Awareness Month, so I'll be kind of reading through some of my notes that I have.
Okay, great.
So this is a time to reflect on our drinking habits and explore ways to support those who want to drink less. ADPEP initiatives align with this goal by educating individuals, especially youth, on the risk of alcohol misuse and providing resources for healthier choices. Alcohol Awareness Month provides us, encourages us, to consider how we, as a community, can work together to reduce excessive alcohol use. The ADPEP program works closely with several organizations like Partnerships Against Alcohol and Drug Abuse, PADA, and Lincoln County School District to promote community-wide education and resources to youth. The ADPEP program holds an annual event in collaboration with Oregon Liquor and Cannabis Commission, OLCC, to educate retailers on the responsible sale of alcohol, cannabis, and tobacco. Retailers receive training on current laws and identifying fake IDs. This training has helped reduce youth access to alcohol all around Lincoln County. Many individuals may cross the line into excessive drinking because society normalizes alcohol use. On a quarterly basis, health promotion and communicative disease sections collaborate with Angel Job Corps, a residential career training and education program for low-income young adults ages 16 to 24, to deliver prevention education on a variety of different subjects. These fairs have helped address societal influences and educates young people on physical and mental health risks, on alcohol abuse fostering more informed and healthier choices. So some statistics are, one in five Oregon adults drink excessively, though not all of them are affected by alcoholism. More than 2,000 people die each year in Oregon due to excessive alcohol use. ADPEP aims to reduce these statistics by raising awareness about the consequences of excessive drinking and promoting preventative strategies, particularly targeting youth and high-risk groups. As the spring arrives, with holidays, weddings, and sporting events in the horizon, it's crucial to have conversations about how alcohol affects our health in our communities.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sarah, anything to add?
Yeah, Ruby did a great job preparing information to share. You know, I think about the work that ADPEP has done. Well, each September, we talk about Recovery Month. That's each year when we look at recovery and treatment works. So what we want to prevent the need for that, we also recognize that people in recovery can recover from alcohol. And working, our partnership with Angel Job Corps is particularly special, given the history of Hands Across the Bridge and why we do that event many years ago, losing an Angel Job Corps student to misuse of alcohol. So we know that this impacts our community in unseen ways and seen ways. So the work that is being done is small and mighty and impactful across our community, so we appreciate the recognition of Alcohol Awareness Month.
That's wonderful, and that was an impressive, and of course, concerning set of statistics. Could we arrange that they be sent to our front desk, Geneva, and I think all three commissioners, we'd probably like to have that for reference?
Yes.
And I'd like to ask a question. You know, this is an area where I've tried to contribute for a long time, 20 years ago, appointed to the Governor's Council on Alcohol and Drug Programs, and trying to support things in this area ever since. And I just kind of had one of those lightbulb moments in reflection. And whenever I will talk to, with people about illegal substances, you know, 20 years ago, it was methamphetamine, today it's fentanyl, people were, yeah, yeah, this is awful, we've got to do something about it. But then I bring up alcohol abuse, and the whole tone of the conversation kind of changes. And frankly, I see people becoming defensive, and I'm just wondering, is that because alcohol use and even abuse is maybe more socially tolerated than abuse of drugs?
I mean, absolutely. Throughout the history of mankind, there's been alcohol use, so it's one of the oldest socially acceptable, consumable drugs to use that has impairment. So we understand that, and we're respectful of that, and try not to be the fun police, right, around public health and the topic, but at the same time, we know that the health consequences are vast, and it really is impactful on families and individuals. And, you know, we've seen various iterations over the many years, from Mothers Against Drunk Driving to the current campaign is... What is the current campaign title?
Rethink the Drink.
Rethink the Drink. Yeah, so really trying to find that messaging that allows people to make healthy choices without the stigma.
That's great. Well, Commissioner Miller, you sound eager to jump in here, so go right ahead, please.
Realize, you know, being a term here that's an interesting one to unpack. So rethink the drink. Is there any, you know, framework around that that you could share with us? Like, where does that begin? Because, and I also want to ask too, like, how do we recognize where we've gone from having fun to problems? Is there any practical guidance staying in folks? We might be overdoing it.
Yeah, so rethink the drink, they really focus on, you know, what does a standard drink look like? What is excessive drinking? They have a webpage online, and it has a lot of information on there. We encourage, like, anybody to go on the website, and they have...
Rethinkthedrink.org?
Yeah, rethinkthedrink.org, I can send it to you and share it. But they have information there, you know, like a drink counter, they have different tools that you can use. But it's really like trying to be aware about, you know, where it comes up, and, you know, do you need, do you need alcohol in every setting? You know, like, maybe let's consider this next month, like, can we incorporate non-alcoholic drinks in a, at a party to support others that are there? You know, maybe try to stagger how much we're drinking. But they really focus on, the campaign is through OHA, and they really focus on drinking less is the key messaging, so.
The non-alcoholic beverage movement, it seems like it's really gotten really big and sophisticated. So is that movement, you know, seen as a good one? I mean, I presume it's seen as a good one, but at the same time, do you talk at all about how to make that a positive, and, you know, whether it's just having certain days where you drink, you know, or don't? I mean, is there any guidance on that?
Right, well, I would say it's not about prohibition, you know, it's encouraging healthy habits and behaviors and educating to understand what those healthy habits and behaviors are. Because what might be socially normal in one setting to an individual is actually excessive drinking and not understood or recognized. So that's part of that, is reducing, just reducing the stigma around it, but also just that self-awareness to be able to make those choices. So the tools are allowing people to explore that in a way that is not finger-wagging, right? Like, you can go in and kind of explore it on your own, and do some self-evaluation on what your habits are, what your family habits are, maybe recognizing what you thought was normal, because that's what you've seen is maybe more than, is in that excessive or binge category, and where those things start to have health impacts.
Yeah, I was at a dinner party, well, not a dinner party, but with a couple. They had made non-alcoholic beverages, and I honestly couldn't really tell.
Okay.
And, you know, maybe it was just having fun with these people, and I was really wondering, like, I don't know, I don't think I'm getting a buzz, maybe, is this really alcohol? And I think what was great about it is that maybe it really challenges that assumption around, you know, what is having a good time? And, I mean, I wouldn't, you know, I think some of these new drinks are absolutely fantastic, you know, they have that sophistication that people associate with, you know, alcohol, especially the fine drinks, and I think it's wonderful, so creating awareness about this, I think it's just great. Thanks for coming in.
Thanks, Commissioner Miller. Commissioner Chuck, anything to chime in with?
Oh, yeah.
Know how this is, the youth are being involved in the, how you're educating youth.
So, yeah, good question. We, so every, on a quarterly basis, we go out to Angel Job Corps. They're located in Yahots, Oregon. So we go out and we do a small mini-fair, where we talk about different, you know, different topics around health promotion. I have gone, and I have talked about, you know, alcohol and the implications, you know, risks associated with, like, youth and drinking, and what it does to their brain. And then also with the, with the Lincoln County School District, we've also done, like, fentanyl awareness days. So we go and we raise awareness about, you know, the impacts of fentanyl on our community, and, you know, different refusal skills we share through materials and things that youth can take.
We also partner with PADA, which is a local coalition that is addressing this across the HCS, but we, for many years, PADA has put on a youth leadership conference where, I don't know, 120, 150 youth come over. I might be making that number up, so strike that. I don't know how many youth. It seems like a lot when you're at the Center for Health Education. So, you know, having speakers come out, partnering with them on the education. They actually recently started a youth board committee as PADA. They just did the first middle school youth leadership conference, where the teen leaders did the organization and did education activities, and then did a Q&amp;A session. So some partnering with local coalitions is one of the strategies as well, to be able to support that, to be a part of the board, to work with the other partners who are also interested in this. So we also do the social media campaigns, the parent education when we have the opportunities, and any of our outreach and engagement events include information to the community about alcohol awareness. We provide a whole host of information when we're at events, but specifically having those local trusted partners who are working with our youth is one of the best avenues that we have to get through.
Thank you for that, and I just want to acknowledge your efforts to educate the citizens of Lincoln County. It is a health issue, and I appreciate all the hard work you do.
Thank you.
Would somebody like to make a motion, please?
I'll second that motion.
All in favor of the motion, please say aye. Aye. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We move on now to the consent calendar. Routine items or items that have been discussed at previous meetings, are there any items commissioners would like to either highlight or remove from the consent calendar for individual consideration?
I have none. I'll second that motion.
All right, we have the motion for the consent calendar. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. All right. And I didn't hear any nays, I heard three ayes. So now we are ready to move on to a public hearing today. This is on the jurisdictional transfer of certain county roads to the city of Yahots. And Kristin Yule, what? Oh, your mic isn't on, it looks like, the red button, oops.
There we go. Can you hear me now? Okay.
Okay, Council Yule, shall I go over the procedure first, or do you want? Yeah, and then you'll make your staff report. Okay. Because it is a public hearing, we do have rules of procedure for that, and right now I am opening the hearing for the matter of the jurisdictional transfer of portions of Oceanview Drive and Marine Drive to the city of Yahots. And now I will request a staff report from County Council Kristin Yule.
Thank you, Chair. Kristin Yule, County Council. Mr. Dewan, Public Works Director, submitted a report on this. At your February 25th meeting, you approved the initiation of the transfer. What I prepared for you is just an outline of the procedure for how a transfer of county roads happens, and this is under ORS 373-270. So the first step, what you accomplished on the 25th was to adopt an order in initiating the transfer to the city of Yahots. Notice was published for this public hearing as required under statute, and the hearing is going to allow for testimony on whether the statutory language is whether it's necessary, expedient, or for the best interests of the county to surrender jurisdiction to the city. If you decide to proceed, we will adopt an order initiating the offer to surrender these county roads, and then the city will have time, there will usually a time limit in the order that would be given to the city to accept the transfer. And then they have to actually adopt an ordinance accepting it. So any questions on Mr. Dewan's staff report?
I have none. Commissioner Miller or Commissioner Chuck?
I have none.
No, I'm fine, thank you.
So I will formally request public input now, and let's check online if we could first, Mr. Lipp, to see if anybody wanted to offer testimony specifically on this subject. If so, please use your hand. All the county staff. Okay, is there anybody in the audience who has signed up to testify on this? Other public comment will come later in the evening, later in the meeting, but right now, this is the opportunity to testify on this proposed transfer. Okay, hearing none. I will now close the hearing, and we open things up to discussion on whether it's in the best interests in the county to surrender jurisdiction over these roads identified in Order 02-25-09. Commissioner Chuck?
I have none. I think Mr. Dewan's memo here states pretty clearly.
Yeah, thanks. Thanks, Commissioner Chuck. I think we're ready to go on this as well.
I think so, too.
If everything's in place, we've done what we need to do, and it's going to be nice to get closer to being done.
Mm-hmm. I'd entertain a motion at this point.
So what we, so the next step would be if there's an order of, if there's consensus, we'll bring back an order at the next meeting for a decision.
Okay, looks like informally we have consensus, but just to confirm, Commissioner Miller, yes?
Yep.
Commissioner Chuck?
Yes.
And me, okay. So this will be back before us April 16th. Now we've got three decision and action items on the next segment of our calendar, of our agenda. The Memorandum of Understanding between the Board of Commissioners, Sheriff's Office for Emergency Management. This is a continuation of a longstanding agreement. Commissioners, any input, questions, discussion on this?
Thank you. Yeah, I'll get started. I did get a chance to spend some time with Samantha Buckley and Susan Trexel, and that was great. I think they're doing a wonderful job. And I appreciate you putting this on Decision Action, just for a little time for me to meet with them and learn about what they're doing. And I think, you know, I would say one of the unknowns, and this is true for a lot of areas right now, is just looking at those potential federal impacts, you know, nothing in particular to point out at this time, but we did have those discussions, and, you know, they just continue to do great work, and appreciate everything they do, so, thank you. That's all I have.
Wonderful, okay. Would someone like to make a motion on finalizing this MOU update? I guess that's the best way to describe it.
Yes, yeah, I would move that we proceed with the Memorandum of Understanding with the Lincoln County Sheriff's Office for Emergency Management.
Commissioner Chuck?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve this updated MOU, Memorandum of Understanding. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Now we've got a couple of decision items regarding the Lincoln County Commons project, and yes, that continues to roll forward, and County Council Yule, I believe, will walk us through each of these items.
Thank you, Chair. Kristin Yule, County Council. So before you, and this is included in the packet, is a proposal from Table Mountain, and this was just for demolition services for the Lincoln County Commons. So this includes specific buildings for the demo. There's a quote in there, I think it's around 57,000. for the demo. Um, there's a quote in there. I think it's around 57,000. This RFP started back in the fall, um, with Mr. Johnson. Um, Table Mountain was the applicant that was selected from the committee, um, to move forward with a contract. And so I'm asking you today to award the services for Table Mountain.
And let's see. You know, one question I've heard from people, they know that we won't be having the fair at the Commons this year, but, you know, that they, they were asking why, you know, it looks like the buildings are still standing and there are, but my understanding from Mr. Kopp, our facilities director, is that like they've been stripped of wiring, fixtures, um, and, you know, in preparation for this demo work and there's no practical or safe way to make them available this year. Further questions, feedback, comments from commissioners?
No, I don't think so. Appreciate it.
No, I don't have any questions.
Okay, would we be comfortable with a motion at this point then?
Stand by. Let me phrase this right unless you've got it, Commissioner Chuck.
I was just looking for, do you have the exact amount?
We still have to do a contract, so it would just be awarding the demolition services to Table Mountain.
Okay.
For the Lincoln County Commons project.
Should we put it not to exceed or, you know, if something goes haywire, I guess you can bring it back to us?
So the enclosed bid is $57,849.60.
Okay.
And that's attached in the report.
Right.
And the rest of that's online, right? Okay. Very good.
Okay. Ready with that motion, Commissioner?
Uh, sure. I would move that we proceed, uh, with the award of Commons contract to Table Mountain.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor of the motion to award this demolition contract to Table Mountain, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next off, uh, awarding bond advisory services for this project and, uh, Council Yule, you'll probably do a better job of explaining this than I will, but essentially how we're paying for this, you know, every now and then I get asked, uh, gonna raise our taxes to build this new commons? No, we're doing bonding against future room tax revenues, which hopefully the plan and expectation is will not only, uh, cover this project, but provide an ongoing source of revenue for maintenance. So.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, so again, this, um, RFP was issued in October of 2024. You can kind of see the, um, outline. Uh, it was to be awarded in December, but the, um, it kind of got extended. And so now we had interviews on March 19th with three firms that applied. First Trium Advisors, PFM Financial Advisors, and Piper Sandler. Piper Sandler was selected from the committee with the highest score, and, um, they would basically be working with staff to, um, go out for a bond sale or funding of the project.
Okay. Questions, comments from commissioners?
No, thank you.
No, thank you.
Seems pretty straightforward. Okay, um, if we could have a motion, please?
I'll move that we award the contract to Piper Sandler and Company for municipal advisory services for the Lincoln County Commons project.
Well, second that motion.
All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, it's approved. Joe Davidson, our assessor, please come forward. Feel like The Price is Right and saying, and sign in, please. And we know you, but, uh, you know, for the record, the introduction.
I'll make sure my, I think, light needs to be on, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, good morning, Chair Hall and Commissioners Miller and Chuck. Um, for the record, Joe Davidson, County Assessor, and I'm here today to present, uh, the county's application for participation in the 2526 CAFSA program. Um, this is an annual grant available to all Oregon counties, um, and it's intended to, uh, provide support, uh, supplemental funding specifically for assessment and tax functions at the county level. Uh, this was created in the Oregon Legislature in 1989, um, during a time, following a time of economic recession where counties were struggling to, um, carry out basic statutory A and T functions, particularly, um, maintaining regular reappraisal cycles, uh, failing to accurately assess and tax properties, uh, obviously to varying degrees across different counties. And so this was the legislature's attempt to provide support, um, ensure at least some level of support for the counties to carry out these functions and, um, reverse the kind of disintegration that was happening, uh, in administration of the property tax system at that time. And the way it works, the way this program is funded is at the county level, there's two sources, one being recording fees, um, and one being delinquent property tax interest. And so on the recording fee side, $9 of every document that's recorded in the clerk's office goes into a local county assessment and tax fund. Um, in addition to that, on the delinquent tax side, um, 20, so as you know, property tax statements are mailed out middle to end of October. They're due November 15th. If they're not paid by that time, they become delinquent and interest starts to accrue in the amount of one and one-third percent per month or 16% annually. 25% of that delinquent interest goes into CAFSA. An additional 25% of the interest revenue that would otherwise go to non-county and non-K through 12 taxing districts also goes into CAFSA with the goal of, um, that revenue generating at least $13 million on the delinquent interest side. If the Department of Revenue determines through their forecasting that they won't reach that $13 million goal for delinquent tax interest, they can increase those percentages. And this year they're looking at roughly 29% on the, on the tier one interest to reach that $13 million goal. And so that's what we're looking at. That's the revenue that kind of, uh, builds the framework of CAFSA. Um, the amounts that we generate at the county level are deposited into local account, they build interest, and then they are deposited into a state, uh, administered account on a quarterly basis, continues to build interest at the state level. Um, the Department of Revenue who administers CAFSA takes 10% off the top for their own appraisal purposes, uh, because they're responsible to value, um, utility properties in the state as well as some of the high dollar industrial properties. That's DOR responsibility. And so they take 10% out of CAFSA for those services. The remaining amount is distributed back to the counties based proportionately on how much we are claiming in expenses for our A and T functions. And so it's all based on proposed budgets. And so, and that's through this application. So that's what we're doing today is claiming how much Lincoln County is, um, uh, claiming for, uh, A and T services at, at, at our county level. So if we go into the first page, obviously there's a lot more to this application. We've included a couple of the summary pages.
Yeah.
The first page of the application, which, do we have that on this screen? First page is, okay, form. Is there a form ones?
It's 10 pages, right, Joe?
I've got a form one. Was there not a form? Okay.
There.
There we go. Okay. So form one is on what I've got first. This, this covers staffing. Column one is last year's and column two is this year's. So I can kind of see a comparison of the two. Um, there's a little bit of a tweak in our assessment administration, basically in our cartography department as, um, we kind of shifted our deed specialist to more of a cartographic generalist position. So overall, the FTE didn't change, but we did shift a little bit of the responsibilities in that department. Um, and as you can see, this covers more than just the assessor's office and the tax collector's office. Uh, if you go down the line, you can see that the appeals, we still have it labeled as Board of Property Tax Appeals. The Department of Revenue hasn't updated this form. That is now changed to the Property Value Appeals Board, but that is administered in the county clerk's office. And so there's 0.35 of an FTE claim there. Um, tax collection, obviously, and distribution, cartography, that's housed in our office, the assessor's office. However, GIS administration is, um, that's housed in the county surveyor's office. And then of course, um, dedicated IC, IT services, that's all the computer support we get from our IT department. It can also be claimed for assessment and tax related functions. So total, you can see the total FTE for our A and T functions in Lincoln County has not changed. We're not claiming anything more this year. We're not proposing any additional staffing. Um, and then if you move to the next page, um, this is a break. Let's see. Sorry. We've got this opposite of what I've got. So if you go up, back up, do we have a form seven for 25? There we go, right there.
Yeah, that's there.
So this is kind of a breakdown of those same departments and the expenses for each one of them, um, that we're claiming for this upcoming year. And this is all proposed, um, expenses. We're not, again, we're not asking for anything additional. These are just adjustments for cost of living, adjustments for some of our maintenance contracts, um, postage, things like that, um, at the top. And then in the middle are indirect expenses. So this is just based on a percentage that was supplied to us by our finance department. And this reflects some of our other departments like that we rely on, HR, finance, county council, administration. Um, that's what that 10% reflects. And then at the bottom is, um, any capital outlay, which we are not claiming any. We have no capital outlay projects underway. So pretty straightforward there. And then the next section is the exact same two forms. It's just from last year. So you can kind of see more of a history there. Again, no changes in, in FTE even back to 23, 24. And if we want to jump, go ahead and jump to the next section about the history. We provided this just for your own knowledge. Um, we have the first, it's kind of a bar graph. There we go. Okay. Got these kind of shuffled around. This, so this just shows what we were just looking at, but more than like a visual history. Kind of color coded. The purple represents the assessment expenses. Um, the red represents indirect expenses, green is tax, orange is IT, and then the little blue section is for our appeals administration. And so no surprise, expenses go up over time. Um, there were, there were some layoffs in 2009, 2010, so a little dip there. But in reality, ever since that time, we have not added any more staffing. We've kind of relied on what we had ever since that time. If you jump to the next graph, sorry, can you move up to the one? There we go. Okay. So this is total expenses that we filed each year, which is the blue bar compared to what we are receiving each year in grant revenue from CAFSA. Um, as you can see, CAFSA is relatively stagnant. The amount of revenue is not indexed in any way. It's been pretty flat since it was established. And so the red bar is just kind of remained flat over time, whereas our blue, you know, the expenses go up. The green represent, the green line represents how much of the grant revenue, um, covers our expenses. So, um, it's basically a ratio of the grant revenue to our expenses. So you can see at one time, this grant covered over 40%, 40, almost 44% of total A and T in Lincoln County. That was also at a time, you see little asterisks there in the 2001, at the bottom, the 2001, 2002 year. That's when the state decided to kick in additional special payments in the amount of $5 million per biennium, um, to help boost CAFSA. That was eventually phased out in 2009, 10. And you can kind of see ever since that time, you know, the, the proportionate amount of the, what this grant covers as far as our expenses just continues to go down as our expenses go up. There was a little bit of a spike, uh, during COVID when, um, interest rates were reduced significantly. There was a lot of refinance activity at that time. So a lot of document recording fees were recorded. And so that, that recording revenue was kind of boosted at that time. And then it dropped as interest rates, uh, were increased again.
And, and Joe, can I ask you here?
Yeah, sure.
I mean, isn't there some legislative activity to kind of bring this back?
There is. There's currently probably one of the best efforts that I've seen since I've been in this position. There's a bill, um, I had it written down here.
Yeah. Sorry if I.
Oh, no, that's great. I actually wrote that down because I thought.
Okay.
We might want to discuss that. Uh, House Bill 3518.
Okay.
Is currently on the table and, um, several of the counties, including me, went to the legislature, um, on March, it was the middle of March. We packed the room, you know, in support of this because obviously this is what's going on, you know, the CAFSA was a great idea, but unfortunately it was not indexed. And so as you can see over time, it's just flat. It should be increasing along with our expenses, um, with a goal. There was a goal at one time, as Commissioner Hall knows, of covering, what was it, 50%?
Right.
Of.
Yeah. And we've never gotten there.
Never got there.
You've shown us, uh, the roller coasters headed downhill in one direction.
Right.
Yeah.
And so what.
Frustrating to say the least.
So we almost got there with those special payments and we've just never been close since that time. And so the current bill, 3518, is, hmm, one of, one of the ideas is to double recording fees, which would mimic as if those recording fees were indexed all this time.
Okay.
So those would go from nine, the amount that would go to CAFSA would go from nine to $18 for document recording. That's one of the aspects of this house bill. Um, the other one would completely replace the delinquent interest portion. That would go back to the taxing districts. And in place, we would take 0.3% of total property tax collection that would go to A and T's functions.
Okay.
So that would naturally grow with property taxes.
Got you. So the bill includes both or one or the other?
Includes both of those, those, so doubling recording fees for CAFSA and replacing the delinquent interest piece with a 0.3 holdback, 0.3% holdback.
Okay.
Um, and there's also a piece that the state would kick in $10 million per biennium into CAFSA. So the special payments would return, um, but in, in a significantly more amount, $10 million versus five.
Okay.
Which it was previously.
So do the number crunchers believe this will get us to or at least significantly closer to the 50% support?
I think the goal would be 30.
30?
Yeah. I think that's.
Even that would be a big improvement.
Yeah, I mean, that's triple what we are right now. We're at about 11 point, you know, around 11%, 12% right now of total coverage of this. And so bringing that back up to 30% would be pretty significant for, especially the counties that are really struggling. We're doing okay, you know, we, we're fortunately, we have a, we have a decent tax rate for the county, uh, $2.82 per $1,000. There are several counties that have a tax rate at less than a dollar, you know, to cover all of their function, their county functions.
Yeah.
Those are the, and the, the timber reliant counties, those are the ones that are really struggling and having to cut services and cut hours. And so this will really help them out especially. And that's kind of the, the overall goal of this program was kind of a shared responsibility, um, amongst the counties to help each other out, um, and uphold the entire property tax system statewide, not just a particular county. And so, yeah, that, that is.
Your presentation?
What's that?
I, I just wanted to make sure that we didn't jump into your presentation.
Oh, no, that. I did mean to discuss that. So this was a good time to, to kind of cover that legislation that's currently on the table. There's a lot of support, obviously. AOC, that's one of their priority bills from my understanding. A lot of support from the counties, obviously. There's even some cities that have come forward in testimony of support, um, because you know, like Lane County, for instance, some of their cities are supporting this because they've had to lay off a lot of appraisers and they have no regular reappraisal cycle anymore. And so the values are just out of whack. There's a lot of omitted property out there that is not on the tax roll.
Interesting.
And so they've, the mindset there is they can hire appraisers back to go out and appraise properties, and this would actually boost revenue that's
Yeah.
laying out there that's not currently on the tax roll to make up for the, the cost involved. So.
Okay.
A lot of support. So we're currently watching that one very closely. Um, and so back to the graphs that we were on. So yeah, this is the last one that we provided. And this is just a snapshot of Lincoln County. And so back to the graphs that we were on. So yeah, this is the last one that we provide. And this is just a snapshot of Lincoln County particularly. Snapshot of the revenue. So. What Lincoln County generates for CAFSA versus what we get back. You can see back. A while back, we were actually benefiting more from this program. We were getting more back than we were putting in.
And now we're a donor county.
And now we, yes, we are considered a donor county, especially once those special payments were phased out in two thousand. Nine, that seems to be when the shift happened. And ever since then, you can see it's just getting more and more extreme, the amount that we're. Putting into the pool versus what, what we're getting back. So, but that's kind of the intent of the program. That's that whole shared responsibility aspect.
Okay.
And so that's, that's kind of what I have. The, the idea is this application is due May first to the Department of Revenue. So it's up for decision or, sorry. Discussion now. It'll be up for a decision action April sixteenth, I believe.
Okay.
Commissioner Chuck, haven't given you a chance to jump in on this yet. So take your swings if you wish.
So if this passes, will our amount go up?
Yes.
Okay. And I just want to say thanks for, you gave me a preview when we met in your office and I think I appreciate that. And you explained it well. And it actually, actually the importance of your office to Lincoln County. So I appreciate the time it took. Yep.
Appreciate it.
All right, do we have? Consensus to move this forward as an action item on the sixteenth?
Yeah, yeah, I think we do.
All right.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you, Mr. Davidson. Yes. Looks like we don't have any presentations. So we are now at the public comment. Portion of the agenda, Mr. Lip. Can we see the clipboard who signed up and will remind people that. Public comments have a three minute time limit. And. We do have some rules of procedure, but they boil down to, I really think. Being respectful. So, Mr. Lip, who have we got first?
First is Sharon Robinson.
Okay, come on forward, please. Okay, okay, no problem.
Okay. My name is Sharon Robinson. I live in Walport. And I am the current president of the Seal Rock Garden Club. Which is in Seal Rock. And I come today because we have a question and some concerns. A couple of months ago, it was actually in February. Ty, Tyann Rios came to us and she is with the Beach, Walport Beach Commerce. And they presented to us. Their plan to put a farmer's market on Rad Street, which is a county road. And the, that would require closing Rad out. And for one day a week. And. That affects the garden club in several ways. So I had her come to the board meeting of the garden club. She explained what she was doing and. We had lots of questions. And so we were, I figure about fifty fifty. Were kind of half of them were like, this is interesting. The other half is like, no. So. Then we talked about it in our general meeting. And again, the consensus was almost a hundred percent, no. We, we concerned about a couple of things. How does she have the ability to close off a road without public input? We were concerned that we had no input. This road is also with the fire department and there's a store, the bead store. And we, we don't have any input from them at all before this decision was made. She presented it to us as being a done deal. I like the French word that I can't say very well.
But. Pay the complete, maybe?
There you go. And, and that was the, the whole thing boiled down to. So my questions are. Can she close off our road without our input? Does she need a permit? And I have to tell you that I'm here today. Because somebody, when I called on the phone, said, go to the county commissions, they'll be able to answer it. And. I've talked to just about everybody. I joke that I've spoken to everybody but animal control. Nobody gives me any input, how this occurred. And, and what input we would have on its possibility. We're concerned about liability. We have a piece of property that our insurance does not allow. For us to have other uses other than the garden club. And. So what happens if someone gets hurt? Our insurance, was it covered? Do they, do they have insurance that covers that kind of stuff? We also are very concerned about our property. We have been long time planning and now is the time we're going to do it. Redoing our yard and making it an actual garden that would be fitting.
Excuse me, I need to stop you. We're at the three minute mark, but thank you for your input. And.
That's it?
Yeah. Mr. Hughes. If you could come forward, please, you move, this is Anna Hughes, County Planning Director. And if you'd be seated, Mr. Hughes. You moved forward when Ms. Robertson began to speak. So. Do you have any information? To guide us as?
I do.
Okay.
You know, it's rare for me to.
Right.
Try to come in.
Right. Yeah. Yeah, usually we follow up afterwards, but I'm thinking people may be here who have the answers.
Because. Madam Chair, Madam Members of the Commission, Anna Hughes, your, your planning director. So I'm quite aware of what's happened. I'm, I'm in, I've been engaged for the last week. Because of the concerns that have been raised. The process. Now that I understand it, and I, and so I think that the person that was. Hoping to put the farmer's market in Seal Rock was trying to create opportunities for. Vendors to, to sell their things. So that was their motivation. Early on, when that individual. Again, interact with the county, there was a little bit of wait. I, I think what happened was to, and I think it's important to put this on the record so everybody understands it. That. The question came. Either to us first at the planning department or to public works because it's not.
Sure, my con on it was. Thank you. I'll, I'll start. The, the, the process to, let me start with this. The process to close a road, there is such a process. Now that's different than. Your authority as commissioners to vacate a right of way.
Yeah, his mic wasn't on. We just took care of it. Sorry.
Geneva just caught that I was.
Yeah.
So. The. So this is not about a road vacation, but I've learned too, in the last several days, that there is a process. And so the public works director. Can. Temporarily, they, they have the authority to close a road.
Yeah. And may I interrupt just briefly? This sounds very much like the kind of agreement we work out with, say, the city of Newport each year. To close Harney Street, the portion of Harney Street that runs through the county commons.
That they would.
A limited time.
Right, but it would be their public works director, right?
In this case.
And thinking out loud, now that you've mentioned it, Madam Chair, I think the, the other. Example that comes to my mind is the Fourth of July parade in Glen Eden Beach, right? That's a county facility. So there's some. There are arrangements. There is a process. But I think what happened when this individual tried to engage the county. I'm willing to take my share of responsibility that on behalf of our department and the public works department that there was a little bit of. Wait a minute, that's how, that public works said that's kind of a planning issue and then planning is going, well, no, that's a, that's a public right of way issue. So there was. And, and I think I've also understand that she came and spoke to you. So there were attempts, there were legitimate attempts. On the people that wanted to make this happen to, to engage us. All right. So. Because I think part of the narrative was, wait a minute, there's someone's really trying to force some. So I, I want to take, I'll take responsibility on, on the part of the county that this. Early on, there was some. A, a lack of, it just as a, it was a mistake. It was absolutely like, I think that's a county. I think that's a planning thing. I think it's a this. And then, of course, I heard back from people, probably from several of you and, and the fire district. That, wait a minute, there's, there's now this controversy. About this farmer's market and can they do it or can, which is reflected in, in our good friends coming here today. So. I have spoke with our public works director about this and given the fact that there, there is substantial opposition. I mean, Michael Dewan has, has the authority to close the road under certain circumstances, but. When I spoke with him this week about this, and I explained the, the backstory of that there's opposition, there's, you know, and right there that. That, that he said, no, he would be, he would be inclined. If there was a, a formal application made to not approve it. Because there are a whole bunch of logistical and other issues that.
Some of which have been raised.
Oh, yeah, just even with one, with the one, that's why I really felt like it would be best to. Come and explain that we're in the process, that that's, this, that's, there is a process. That person tried to engage it. There was a little bit of this back and forth. I think she was under the impression that, well, there really is no process. Let's just close the road. And so that's why I wanted to be here to clear the air that we, we are engaged. I have spoke with her. And, and so I, because I, I got the consent from our public works director to communicate with her that we will not be. That, that, that he's declining to close that road. I just need to close that loop. With, with her and, and, and we just got that confirmation yesterday. So. Unless there are questions, I hope that. Clears the air on what happened and how it happened and where, where it stands now that that's not going to happen. That road is not going to get closed. And so. That, there we go.
Council Yule, do you have anything to contribute on this? Yeah.
Yeah, no, this is sort of early this week, I said, or very late last week, it was like, oh, my God, suddenly there's a bunch of people and they're upset. And so as soon as I understood that, I, I engaged everybody immediately to, to try to figure this out.
Yeah, this is a rare thing for us. I mean, you know, the cities get requests to, and I'm sure. ODOT all the time, but other than what you already mentioned about the yearly Glen Eden Beach Parade, you know, I can't even recall. Any requests, any discussion on temporary closure of county road.
And, Madam Chair, as you, as you know, from dealing with road vacation requests. The, the first and last piece of advice is on something like that, that, that these are very consequential when you close roads or do, you know, or give, give away right of ways. So the. Interacting with the people that would be directly right there in the neighborhood, it really is the first step. I mean, before they come to us and say, hey, we got this idea. It's just as a practice tip for someone who wants to do something like this, interact with those adjacent property owners. Get them on board, get them, hopefully make them part, you know, if it's going to go forward, make them enthusiastic participants. Because there, there are times when obviously it can be a very good thing for a community, right? Now, I don't think there's, you've ever heard a discouraging word about the, the Fourth of July party in, in Glen Eden Beach, which takes up that, that, the parade there. And. So under the right circumstances, it totally can be a very positive thing and everybody can be happy with it.
Oh, yeah. Another example with the Bay Road. Every year. City closes some of its streets that we close the, yeah, for the marathon.
Marathon, yeah.
Exactly. So we do have procedures for doing this. And we've just got to steer people from the beginning to the right steps.
And just so you know, I really wanted to make sure our friends also at the Seal Rock Fire District who expressed profound concerns. Understood that from my perspective, no one was really trying to pull a fast one here, that this was basically, there was an attempt to engage us. And, and so we're there now in terms of being able to provide the, the feedback. And I, so I think, I think we're in good shape. I'll, I will certainly make sure. When I get back to the office to. Respond to the person who made the applications because we're, I got there. She knows I, it's my job to get back to her now to tell us, to tell her where things stand and I will do that.
Thanks, Mr. Hughes.
Can I get a, a shot when you're done?
Sure.
Okay, thank you. Director Hughes, if somebody wants to have an event that's going to involve a road closure, it starts with public works.
It, it begins and ends with them, right? It's really, it's really not a planning issue. I'm, I'm here because I stepped in knowing there was a problem and I just knew we needed to get. Get this figured out. These people are upset. Yeah.
Okay, so if somebody wants to have a craft fair involves a road closure.
Yeah.
They would, just their entry point would be.
And if it's a county, if it's a county.
Okay.
Managed facility or a right of way, yes, then.
Okay.
If this, if the, if it's in the city of Newport, they would talk to the city. If, if we're trying to figure out how to, how to approach this, right, that, that. That ultimately it's our public works department because they may, they manage on your behalf, the, the status of right of ways. Just like they do with the property management stuff. And so I, yes, they would. Again, my, my no brainer. Response to what's the best way to go about this is talk to the neighbors first. Talk to the, talk to, to the adjacent people where you are. Get them on board. Prior, prior to submitting an application, because that's the first inquiry that's going to come back, like with the street vacation. Who, who likes this? Does this, is this in everybody's interest or not? So that, that to me is certainly the. And, and, and in this case, the. You know, I, look, I don't want to try to dissect exactly what happened and how it happened and, and when people, but, but it, but as we move forward, yes. Engage those property owners.
Okay, so it sounds like you're stepping in for Dewan temporarily to help. Work through whoever the applicant was, it sounds like.
Yes, because I was, because again, I was approached by people from the community as well, like, please, please step in and. And then I realized, oh, wait a minute, I talked with our staff and there had been an inquiry and then, so we were kind of involved, but it's really a public works issue. And I confirmed in an email, I said to, to, to our public works director, with your consent. Because it's, it's really a, the public works department, I will communicate with the person that would have been the applicant if they understood this process. And explain that, that's, it's just not going to happen. And the other practice tip is. Make sure you spend, give, give yourself a lot of lead time to have all these discussions, right, before an event. That, that's also, I think, a, a no brainer. One of the two or three things, talk to your neighbors. Don't, don't do it quickly. Because otherwise you will give the impression that, wait a minute, what, this road is getting closed now and for what purpose and that kind of thing.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Lip, we've got some other folks signed up.
You too.
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
No, this is, okay. So. Thank you, Otto.
Thank you.
And I just want to thank you for getting a little more clarification on this. And if there are some questions, you talked to public works and does that apply for privately maintained roads also? Or if, if there's a privately maintained road, how does that, how, how would that work with?
That would, if it's a public right of way, right? So a lot, a lot of these public. So right, in, in Lincoln County transportation world, you've got the ODOT facilities, right? The Highway one oh one and two twenty nine, those kinds of things. Then the, the other major category are things like the Bay Road, right, with the, which is a, a maintained county facility. And then there's a huge amount of just right of ways out there that are, that are managed. By people passing the hat in their community to put some gravel down or, or, you know, re-rock, re-rock a road and, and grade it. Or there's a local. Public, there, there is, their, their equivalent of a public works department where they have a road improvement district that they pay into. And so, but in any, for any of those county facilities or even the not maintained, but county right of ways. You don't just close it. You, you got to go to our public works department. There is an application process. And, and again, the no brainer is talk to your neighbors first and, and make the request reasonable, get them on board and. And then I, then in some cases, they would be eager enthusiasm to do some closures.
Thanks, Otto.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Yeah.
Okay, Mr. Lip, the sign in sheet, please.
Next, we have Sally Nowak.
Hi.
Okay. Next.
We've got Mickey. I'm having a little lynchist.
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 Okay, if you'd like to say something to the record, please come on forward. Okay.
It's kind of after the fact. Since apparently it's been straightened out, you may not even be voting on it. I just wanted to tell you a little bit about our club and, and part of our concern originally when this lady came. She's. They said they were raising, they want to raise funds for. The parade and whatever in. Walport. Walport won't let them have it down there, so they wanted to have it in Seal Rock. I don't know if you're familiar, probably you've seen the garden club, whether you've been there or not. But there is a public road called Rand in front where our address is. There's one in the back between us and the fire department called Ray. The county does, as far as I know, does not maintain them at all. The garden club has maintained that road. Many years ago, even before my time, and I've been here twenty years, the garden club paved it. We occasionally pay to stripe it because. We use it and the public uses it. They use it to go get. Agates and whatever. They'll put a motor home there once in a while. Once in a while, we'll have a homeless person in there. So we maintain that road. But our concerns, first of all, were. So we maintain that road, but our concerns, first of all, were safety. There's very little space between where these cars are parked and where you ingress or egress 101, which would make it extremely dangerous to have a carnival type, I have a short-term memory, a farmer's market there with all that traffic going in and out with people going 40 miles an hour. So a lot of those were our main concerns. But apparently what I want to do now, and I'm not the president, but she uses up her three minutes, is to thank this gentleman for finally straightening this out and thank you for your time. And come to the garden club sometime.
Okay, thank you very much.
I don't know if you know that particular building, we hold it together with Band-Aids, so we have two fundraisers.
Well, it looks nice from the outside.
Well, we're trying and we're going to completely re-landscape it. We painted it about two years ago, so try to keep it up. But it's just Band-Aids because it's a World War II building, pre-World War II building used for conscientious objectors, so.
Oh, wow.
Just kind of keep it together with our own fundraisers. But if, our main concern was safety and people coming and going and, and sanitary things too.
Sure, thank you. Anything else?
On behalf of our club, we do appreciate his time.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming and straightening it out. But our president had a terrible time trying to find out what department to go to to talk about this, because the lady sort of indicated this is like a done deal, we're going to do this. And it just didn't make sense to us.
No, I mean, the usual procedure, which I'm recalling, you know, somebody has to formally submit a permit. There's staff review. If staff recommends granting the request, then it comes to us, usually on our consent calendar. But since as far as we know, there hasn't even been a formal request submitted.
I understood all that. I, I have been here for 20 years, but I was very active in my community of Norwalk, California, at city council meetings, so I'm used to doing all this stuff.
Okay.
Haven't done it for a long time. But on behalf of our club, thank you and thank you for your.
Thanks.
Information.
Who's next?
Next, we have Ellen Hawks.
Okay, great, that's fine too.
And Joy White.
Could I, could I, could I play my? I, I just have a quick question.
Okay, if you've, please come forward then, so it's part of the record, somebody watching the tape of the meeting, you know, and wanting to know, understand what was said, so.
I think that's on.
It is.
Okay. I'm Sally Noack, I'm also from Seal Rock Garden Club. I've been a member for, since about 2000. And my question is, one of the reasons that they wanted to come to use Seal Rock for the farmer's market was I was told by the Walport City that there are applications that were sent out for a request for proposal. And the people that sent them in, they didn't have a 501(c)(3) that included farmer's markets. And that was the reason they wanted to change. My question is, if that person, if it ended up we were in, having a farmer's market in Seal Rock, would they still, would they also have to have it through, just through the county?
I think that's kind of beyond our scope of authority, isn't it?
So who, who, who would know?
In Walport, it was a.
It was the city government, yeah, Mr. Lipp.
It was a contract that the city would have been awarding to them to operate their farmer's market. We wouldn't be contracting with them to run a farmer's market for us. So that would be between them and the IRS, as far as their tax status.
Okay, thank you very much. And thank you for listening to us.
Thanks for your input. All right, do we have anybody who did not sign up who wants to offer three minutes of public testimony? All right then, we will wrap up this meeting and we're continuing our schedule, meeting every other Wednesday, 10:00 AM in this room and also available live and then recorded for later broadcast, upcoming meeting dates, again, all starting at 10:00 AM, Wednesday, April 16th, Wednesday, May 7th, Wednesday, May 21st, Wednesday, June 4th. All right, until the 16th, we're adjourned, thank you.